Call this meeting to order of the Lahana City Council. Today is April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. The time is now six P M. I would like to start with an invocation if we could all rise. Heavenly Father, let us come together in the spirit of community and civic responsibility. As we gather to make decisions for the future of our city, we recognize that our work is not just about policies and procedures, but about people's lives. May we be reminded that every decision we make has a ripple effect on our neighbors, our local businesses, and our environment. And may we be inspired to involve all voices in this conversation, to listen to the concerns of our citizens, and to work towards solutions that benefit everyone. We also call upon the citizens of our city to join us in this effort. You do not need to be a city councilman or woman to help us out in this effort. May be work, may our work be guided by a commitment to the well-being of our community, and when we always remember that the decisions we make today will shape the future of our city for generations to come. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. If we all stay standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the mercy and justice for all.
This is Schofield.
Ramirez? Velasquez? Stoker?
Present.
Ayala?
Here.
Ochola? Pantoia?
Here.
Rico?
I'm here.
All right. The agenda is going to be a little bit different tonight. We have a proclamation to start us off with, then we have some reports, then we'll accept a minute and move on to citizen participation. So bear with me as I read this proclamation. It's always the funnest part of one of the meetings. This is for National Crime Victims Rights Week, April twenty-first through twenty-seventh. Whereas surviving a crime can have a myriad of lasting effects on victims, including physical, psychological, social, and financial issues. Whereas we know that countless survivors never tell anyone about what happened to them. Whereas each, each of us has a moral responsibility to actively participate in the healing of others. Whereas it is necessary to create safe environments for survivors of crime, providing not only support, but also access to critical services, and above all, hope. Whereas victim service providers, community members, businesses, places of worship, colleagues, neighbors, and family members are capable of providing victim-centered, trauma-informed, and culturally responsive support. Whereas we must listen to the survivors and be willing to create new options for the support to ensure that all victims of crime can receive help and seek justice. Whereas we must do everything we can to show survivors that hope, the belief that the future will be better is not just a tangible thing, but something within their reach. Whereas National Crime Victims Rights Week encourages all people to ask themselves this question: How would you help a victim of crime? Whereas the Arkansas Valley Resource Center is hereby dedicated to raising awareness of options, services, and hope for crime survivors. Now therefore I, Mayor Ayala of Lahunta, Colorado, do hereby proclaim the week of April twenty-first through twenty-seventh as National Crime Victims Rights Week, reaffirming the city's commitment to creating a victim service and criminal justice response that assists all victims of crime during Crime Victims Rights Week and throughout the year, and expressing our sincere gratitude and appreciation for those community members, victim service providers, and criminal justice professionals who are committed to improving our response to all victims of crime so that they may find relevant assistance, support, justice, and peace. Sign this. And then do you want to take this with you? Do you want to say something?
Sure. I can. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate that. So I'm Brooke Leonard, the Arkansas Valley Resource Center Director. We've been in business for thirty-seven years. We're a nonprofit that serves at Crowley in Otero County. And we provide services for victims of violent crime. So that covers a whole lot of crimes. Unfortunately, in two thousand and twenty-three, our agency had to serve five hundred and eighty-three victims. I say unfortunately because it's unfortunate that they're victims. I'm glad, however, that we were able to do so. CBI, or Colorado Bureau of Investigation, reported over thirty thousand cases of violent crime in two thousand and twenty-three. So in nineteen ninety-two, Colorado passed a constitutional amendment providing crime victims with specific rights. That's on top of this National Crime Victims Rights that we're talking about and celebrating for next week. That offers rights to victims to make sure that they're heard, understood, and have a voice. This year's theme is how would you help? With options, services, and hope for crime victim services. So we implore the community to be willing to support victims in this community, whether that's volunteering, referring people to our agency, helping a friend. We all know somebody that's experienced trauma in their, in their life. And so by sending them to our agency, we can help them work through that trauma and provide support so that they can cope with it and have a healthy life moving forward. You can learn more at our website, arkansavallaryresourcetenter.org. And we look forward to the continuing support of our city. Thank you.
Thanks, Brooke. All right. Also, on the proclamation side of things, I had to read a proclamation at Otero College for early head start. They were a bit too late to get on the meeting, but I still attended the event and read a proclamation. It was a lot of wherethes, but it was a week of the young child when I did that one. And afterwards, they gave me an update. For Week of the Young Child, a community baby shower event. They had a hundred and fifty-one adults and ninety-one children enter the event. Thirty community partners intending to provide information about their organizations and services. And there'd been a lot of feedback. Last year, they did it in Rocky Ford. This year, they did it in Lahunta. They want to continue to do it in Lahunta. So good job to all of them with early head start. And maybe next year, I'll read a long proclamation for them, too. So then moving on, we have a couple of information reports. First one up is Kitchen of Kindness, who showed up, was it two years now? About two years ago now, just starting off, and they have some good news for us here, so.
I appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Wait up, Terry.
Now, can you hear me?
Start all over again.
All over. We came, Kim and Val and I came to a meeting a couple, over two years ago. And we served our first meal on April first, two thousand and twenty-two. And we were serving once a month. And now we're doing it every Thursday at the First Christian Church building in Fifth and Santa Fe. And that's those out. These are, we do a monthly menu and pass out flyers and put it on Facebook. I think I gave you the agenda there with that. But as our name indicates, Kitchen of Kindness, we serve food. And Val is our primary cook now. And he makes a lot of good hot nourishing meals. And we serve up to like fifty or sixty meals each week. And that means our cost of food is about seventy dollars average each week. And we get assistance from associated charities, a lot of that. And we get donations from individuals and also a few churches. That has kept us above water. We don't, we've never been unable to provide a meal up to this point because of the donations that we receive. And it's because of the generosity of the people. And the time that we met, attended here, everybody was very encouraging and supportive of what we were trying to do and that you continue to do so. What we're doing now is Joe indicated, do I call you Joe? Mayor Joe? We recently got our nonprofit association finally after two years of effort. Aaron was, you know, and some of that. And Dan Horton, I think, attorney, helped us a great deal. And so we just recently got that, which means all of our donations that we now did are tax exempt. And the bad news for you is that we don't have to pay the sales tax. We've, we've applied for that or are in the process of applying for tax exemption, sales tax exemption, but we haven't received that yet. So all that means is we're looking towards the future. And when we started, Kim and I, Kim, this is Kim, this is Val, and this is Casey, our supporters here, and volunteers, we're all volunteers. And Kim and I sat down at a table with her husband and came up with this idea that we were going to have a homeless shelter. Well, that was, that was a little ambitious. So we backed off. We got some more volunteers after our meeting here, attendance here, and decided to do the meals and then work towards buying our own facility. Right now, we're, like I said, we're serving once a week at the Christian church. And they've been very kind to let us use their facilities. And there's some upgrades that need to be made for a commercial kitchen, which would be the next step that we encounter. And what we have to do is either upgrade their kitchen or get a place of our own, which we would like to eventually get a place of our own. And that means more money. We've applied for some grants and some corporations since we got our nonprofit app indicated that they might be willing to provide us some funds, which is wonderful. We're not just nickel and diming it anymore. We're looking for some larger contributions. And so that's what we hope to do is to eventually be able to provide a place of our own with a commercial kitchen. And there's health department regulations, of course, that we have to abide by and that. And then also eventually, our idea is to, possibly like in the freezing weather, we could provide shelter for some, at least on a temporary basis, and work towards doing it a full-time shelter. Our main goal is to help those that are in need. And I think as your prayer indicated, everybody's important. Doesn't matter if you're on the streets or whatever. We're all, as I say, made in the image of God. Bible says that, I didn't say that. And so there are people that we're trying to help, are struggling. And we, we have resources or we look for resources to try to help them in various ways, including food and shelter in certain cases. And if there's a alcohol, lots of alcohol and drug problems, we try to provide them with resources to overcome that and help them get back on their feet. And that's why we encountered, started this. And also, we've started with Casey is primarily in charge of our clothing giveaway. When, when it got cold this winter, we had donations of bedding and blankets, as well as warm clothes, and those went pretty fast. We've still got some, but they've been given away quite rapidly. So that's where we're at now. Anything else?
No, you covered it.
I have a question for you, Terry.
All right.
How has it grown since you guys started? How many people are you feeding currently?
When we started, we were serving at the Santa Fe Park. And we might have ten to twenty, twenty-five. Now we're serving like sixty, sixty-five meals each week. Average about fifty, probably.
Are these all homeless?
No. They're, they're primarily struggling. They may have a home, but they find difficult to make ends meet. And then we have a couple of older ladies who just like to come for the
Maureen?
Socialization.
So any of the homeless that you do serve, and you say that you're giving them resources to get help, since there is no shelter in this area, is there a way, you know, to maybe refer them to go somewhere where they, they could have a full-time shelter?
Yeah. Kim is our resource.
It's hot in the summer, really hot, and it's cold in the winter? And there's no, there's no facility?
Say that when we, Kim and I started talking about this, we had homeless people living with us. And it got to a point that it just wasn't working, at least for us and for you, too. And so that's what prompted us to say, there's got to be a better way to do this.
Well, we appreciate your opinion.
When we started out, Terry and Faith Smalling in their home had some that, that were currently homeless and had substance abuse problems. My husband, Clint Comison, and I also had some in our home that were not substance abused, but were homeless. It was an older woman, an eighty-year-old woman, and her son. Over the years, you know, we've done, we've, we've learned that you cannot do this on your own, in your own home. You can't bring this home with you. And so we have worked to gather resources from all the agencies in, in the area. And we initially talked to people in all these agencies, too, about what the need was. And so we hand out that information. We help with filling out paperwork because sometimes that's overwhelming. We help with rights to go pick up applications for housing. Although, as you probably know, most housing available to the low-income in our area is a long waiting list, very long waiting list. We've had some success stories, people that got on their feet, got jobs, were able to maybe relocate to another area where they were in a family home. We have referred people to shelters, other places, and we have provided a bus ticket to get them there. We have this, you know, various agencies. Quite often, we notice towards the end of the month, we have bigger groups than the beginning of the month. And what we realized was that by the end of the month, your food stamps and money runs out. We have families with children coming. We have elderly coming. We have homeless. We have transients. We have what I call homegrown homeless that for what usually due to substance abuse, have worn out their welcome with family, but still stay in the area. And we assist them with food and clothing and, and resources to agencies that are available in our area. And so we, by now, just, this mostly just support and paperwork stuff like that?
Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Good luck, Terry.
Thank you.
You want to put some, how to contact you if they want to?
Yes. No. My phone number, if you wanted, is seven one nine four six eight seven one five seven. And meant to say that we also have a Facebook page that we put those menus on every month, and we have like six hundred and seventy-nine followers. So that's our main advertising is the flyers, which we post around town, as well as on Facebook. And something I forget. Oh, you asked about the numbers. Last year, last winter, we got a little down because our numbers fell off when we moved indoors. And we didn't know why that was, but that hasn't been a problem this year. So then they now know where we're at and where to find us, I think. And so that's, those are numbers go up considerably.
Terry, there was a lady?
Besides, the food is good.
There's a question.
Here's a question.
Yes.
Last fall, there was, I found a kid who was sleeping in a shed and was on an abandoned property. And he didn't know, he didn't know anything about where he could go for help. And I didn't know either. So what would I tell somebody if that happened again? I mean, like, is there an address? What's, besides Kitchen of Kindness?
We serve at the First Christian Church. It's one oh nine West Fifth. And we enter on the Santa Fe, we're there every Thursday.
So you can give him a place to sleep or?
We, we don't have emergency housing.
You don't have anything yet?
No.
Not yet.
Okay, well, I can tell him where he can get something to eat.
Yeah, you can give him my phone number, my phone number.
Well, I haven't seen him again, but.
Did you have a?
Yeah, I did.
Okay. This is Val.
He's. To go into your question a little bit, the Pier House on six thirteen Barnes, he can get some resources there. But aside from that, I also wanted to say that we, we want to be available for emergencies and things like that, too.
Okay, that was the idea of if we get our own place, like the last two winters have been some extreme weather, then possibly we could be a resource for helping with that, too.
Do you need winter coats and blankets?
Not now.
Not now? I know a bunch of kids that leave the dorms every year about May fifth and leave behind a lot of blankets. I've been trying to figure out how to recycle them.
Yeah, we could take them and put them away for next winter.
Yeah. I mean, I can even find a place to hang on to them for you, but.
That'd be great. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Mr. Ben Mason. He is here. I know I seen him walking.
Good night, bye-bye. Good evening.
Good evening.
Really glad to be here. We're glad to be open. So it's been extremely successful. We're seeing people from, from all over the valleys. Far, far south is Trinidad, Walsenburg area, coming up here to shop and do business. And I think that's real good. We're getting, you know, four to six hundred people a day in our store shopping. And it's definitely pulling from, from the area and up down the fifty corridors. So in fact, we've started hiring again. We've been so busy. So really good. We're excited. We're, we're going to be grand opening on May third. Big party out there. We'll probably have a bounce house for kids and food trucks and great deals within the store. Following the weekend, we got some Mother's Day stuff going on for kids to come in and make some things for moms. So the community's been just excellent to us. We're really happy, happy with, with the result. Been a long year, but we're glad to be able to.
It's just May third, is it?
It'll be that weekend. It'll be that Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And the, the deals, we'll have a special ad that'll get mailed out to everyone. That'll probably run for a couple of weeks, so.
And is the store full yet, or what are you guys expecting on that?
We've, we still have a few areas that we're, we're lacking some product in. You know, it's, it's probably ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent full. Of course, there's a number of things we couldn't plan on until customers started coming in, letting us know what they're looking for. So we're working on getting a lot more items that we weren't planning on in just to better serve the community. So most things are there. We just, this week started receiving plants and vegetables and trees, and, and they've been a huge success. So hopefully, we'll start seeing some, some pretty lawns and, and pretty flower beds as, as we get through the spring here with some, some fresh locally purchased items, so.
How many employees do you have?
Right now, we have thirty-four. I'm looking to hire somewhere between five and ten more. So just got a, a second one yesterday. So I think that's, that's always good when we can provide some, some jobs to citizens. And then, of course, the tax dollars, the sales tax is going to go to the city. I think will, will benefit everyone, so.
I remember when we were having the initial meetings about bringing Sutherland's in, and Mark and Billy were here. Their biggest concern was if we would have employees to, to, to fill the store. Your hiring event, you guys had quite a few.
Yeah, we had over four hundred people show up for a hiring event that we advertised on, mainly on Facebook. So quite a, a huge number of folks looking for, looking for jobs. Of course, I also reached out and had Colorado Workforce helping us. So they were sending folks that maybe don't have access to social media, but, you know, are still looking for a job to kind of send them in as well. So we, we got a few from them. And then, you know, we've had some, some food trucks out there. We all have noticed that. Some people, one lady we hired, she just stopped in for lunch and noticed all the people in the store and thought we were open, went in, found out it was a hiring event, and she had a good job, so. All in all, the Congress is, has been great, you know? Like I said, we've had Lamar in, Walsenburg, Trinidad. Fowler's is, is further west than I've seen. North of Ordway, quite a, quite a large number of folks that I think are coming to town that maybe might not have been before we were open, so.
We appreciate you guys being here.
Yeah, it's been great. It's been great seeing all you guys in there. And we've also gotten, all the cities as well have come in and filed their tax exempt with us and signing up for charge accounts. So, you know, Fowler, Rocky Ford, Swink, Los Animas, their fire departments, police departments, their city, city offices have been in. So that's going to be a lot of, a lot of extra money that wasn't here before.
Maybe soon Kitchen of Kindness will be in there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I went to their meeting a couple of weeks ago, so. Yep, yep.
Thank you, guys. You, Matt, all of that is, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Quick, if you would grace us with your presence.
I brought you this just in case you want stats. This is in the computer.
We all have stats. We all have stats.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your time. Just wanted to discuss a couple of incidences happened over the last two weeks. Been a lot of Facebook recovery. Move the mic out there so I can give you guys the opportunity to ask any questions if you want. So the first one was the Walmart incident back on the sixth of April. The way that came in, the whole situation actually started off with a phone call to Rocky Ford Dispatch saying that a Lahana police officer had been shot in Rocky Ford. They contacted our dispatch, since, you know, all our officers are, you know, accounted for. But in thinking about it, we have three officers living there, so it could have been plausible. But they quickly dispelled that. Shortly after that, our dispatcher receives a call that there was an active shooter in progress, not in progress, I'm sorry. He was armed, but not shooting in the store. So that came in about eight fifty-five. At eight fifty-eight, the Lahuna PD officers arrived, made contact with the Walmart staff, and confirmed that there had been no shooting inside the store. They later made contact, just a few minutes later, with a person outside who was the one that made the call. So they were, we're talking to him. Meanwhile, Walmart was evacuating the store. I called in, because it was headed that way, and verified with the two officers on scene. No active shooter, you know, nobody hurt, and, and, you know, it's not happening. And they said, yeah, it's, it's not happening. It's probably a hoax or something. So I immediately contacted the news and let them know, to try to settle everybody down that this was not an active shooter in progress. It was about nine oh three when they had actually started evacuating Walmart. So pretty fast when all this happens. Comes in at eight fifty-five, our guys are on scene at eight fifty-eight, and evacuation's in progress at nine oh three. Heard some things about why the officers weren't making entry. There was actually a couple teams of officers inside clearing. Other officers, as they got there, were waiting, you know, for, for jobs. And once they got the first initial clear done, they got bigger groups and went in and gave a secondary sweep and made sure, for sure, that there was nobody in there. Which it worked out well. During this investigation, officers were able to determine that the caller was the same person. Just happened to have two phones, so two different phone numbers. So the call that went to Rocky Ford was the same person, and then the call that went to Lahuna was. And we were able to make arrests, offer that information. At ten thirty, we actually turned the store back to Walmart. And then just kind of want to remind everyone that all the agencies involved, and I'll give them all credit here in just a minute. We all train, we train together. You know, we're prepared for these incidents. But we have processes we have to go through, just like, you know, getting that first search in there and then the second. So, yeah, we had a lot of red, red and blue lights going over there. But it's things we have to do to make sure this store is safe to, to be able to turn that back to the, to Walmart. So we're asking everybody to please be patient in these situations. And we'd also like to ask the public to help us by staying away from the scenes, if possible, and not showing photos on social media during the operation. The bad guys have social media, too, and they can use that as their advantage for, for intel. So we ask that they not do that and jeopardize the situation. And then lastly, on this incident, this was a successful operation, and it was made possible by cooperation between all the agencies. Lahuna PD, Otero County Sheriff's Office, Colorado State Patrol, Sixteenth DA's office, Lahana Fire and EMS, who actually set up a Fire and EMS Command Post Force, which would be very important if it was real, because we would be in the in place for the. who actually set up a Fire and EMS Command Post Force, which would be very important if it was real, because we would be in the in place for the victims to get triaged and hauled off, lighted off. Right, I can tell you more about that if you wanted, but that's kind of the gist of it. All right. Then the next one was last Thursday, May eleventh. About eleven forty PM, our officers responded to the Arkansas Valley Regional Medical Center Emergency Room, where they'd been told that an inmate had escaped from the ER, was wearing handcuffs, black and white striped pants and a worn shirt. During that time, Otero County Sheriff's Office and Big County Sheriff's Office arrived on scene, and they all started the search in the area. A short time later, two drones were brought in and deployed. And then at approximately nine, ten AM the next morning, we received a stolen vehicle report in the twelve hundred Boca Rodeo area in Lahuna. The search continued all the way through Friday, the twelfth, and the suspect was not located. At approximately noon today, we were informed that the suspect had been arrested in Albuquerque, New Mexico. But up until a few hours ago, and I haven't heard anything different, the vehicle has not been found. So once again, with this one, all the agencies with great cooperation, Lahuna PD, Big County Sheriff's Office, Otero County Sheriff's Office, State of Colorado parole, and Sixteenth Judicial Investigators come out and help, too. So it takes a lot of, you know, we're all small agencies, and it takes a lot of cooperation. We have these agreements ahead of time, much like fire departments, and everybody comes to help when the call goes out.
Just real quick, Todd, on this last one with the person escaping from the hospital, that one, we responded to that, but we're not in charge when they bring someone in like that, right? Our PD is not?
Not of those people in the incident command. We could take command of that, but it was going well, and we just left it the way it was going. So, yeah, it is the escape, and everything is in our city. But no, we weren't in charge of that inmate getting out or anything like that, so. But it just works better to have all the agencies working together instead of one agency trying to do it.
And then back to the first one, when you guys get a call like that, I mean, yeah, you get your people there, you get them on scene, and you figure out what's going on. But we have such fast-acting cooperation and stuff, they're already out there to be there to help. That doesn't mean we're not telling you guys something. They're already there, and we want to just treat it as much, you know, the real thing as we can, because we'd rather be safe in those situations.
Yes, we have to, to prove and wrong, we have no choice. We can't just blow it off. You know, just because we found the guy and everything, we've still got to go through all the processes, clear it, you know, because it could be a setup or something, you know, that he was a decoy to get us to let our guard down, not clear it, and then something happened. So we always got to think, worst-case scenario, stay with our training, stay with the procedures that are used locally, nationally, and then we'll be good.
Yeah, and I just want to remind people, you know, we back our officers and all our first responders one hundred and ten percent. But, you know, you guys have to give them time. And I know people want information as fast as they can get it, but you have to trust that, you know, as soon as we know something, we will share that with you, what we can. But no one is trying to hide anything from the public. And if that was an actual active shooting situation, the last place you want to be is out there. You're beginning in their way, you'll be putting yourself in danger, and then we have to put our resources into doing traffic stuff instead of doing what they need to be doing. And I think you were on scene, and you said it was just madness with all the cars going.
People were driving through, looking loose, wanting to look, coming into the parking lot. And had it turned out that it was a real, the fire chief and I had already discussed, if we didn't have enough help there at the time, you could possibly have fire and volunteers get the intersection shut off until, you know, we have law enforcement take it over. So we've got a plan, and.
But it would have been added resources, because people shouldn't, I'm sorry, but you shouldn't be out in, if there's an active crime scene going on, you guys have no business out there.
Right. And the whole reason I kicked that out that early to the news media, is we knew it was a fact, and please believe it. It's like you said, we're not trying to cover up or anything, hide anything. If we put something out, it's going to be a fact, because I'm not going to make, you know, something up. I'm gonna verify it, and then if it's correct, we'll get it out there. And that comment was supposed to alleviate a little, and it seemed to set another fire.
We got a guy with fires that's good. And then I just want to hit on one more thing, Todd, while I have you up here. You know, without going into details, even when we catch someone that's doing something they shouldn't be doing, illegal, and we arrest them, they're still able to get out fairly quickly. And that does not mean that the PD's not doing their job. That does not mean that, you know, nothing is being done around, about crime in our town. There's a whole lot of steps that take place after we make an arrest that we have no control over.
Right.
But you guys still are doing your job to do that, and I want you to touch on that a little bit.
Absolutely. You know, depending on the type of crime, and especially since COVID, it has to be a pretty serious felony before they'll go to jail or stay in jail. A lot of the misdemeanors, we were told at the time, and they stuck with that, summons and release. That's out of our control, that's what the judicial system says, and it's to help the system flow a little better. I don't necessarily like it, and I wish it would stay in there until we had to go to court, all that stuff. But, you know, once we do our paperwork, put them in jail, it's out of our control from there, whether they get a take, make bond, or get out on VR, or whatever it is, that's up to the judicial system. And I have the same talk, you know, with the officers, because I get bummed that you all did good work and get them put in there. And then, hey, he was almost beat me, you know, by the time I got back to the office, he's already out of jail. You know, we do our job and do the best we can, the stuff that's out of our control, we can't help that.
You can't do all jobs.
Right.
And then, you know, with Kitchen of Kindness here, you know, people have been saying a lot of things about transients and the homeless. But it's not a crime to be homeless. It's not a crime to walk the streets, you know. If you see them doing something wrong, absolutely, call the PD. If they're doing something they shouldn't be doing, let someone know. But just them being out on the trail or being around a local restaurant, that is not a crime. We can't harass them for being out there, you know. There's nothing we can do on stuff like that, am I correct?
That is absolutely true. There are some muni ordinances we can handle, if they're willing to tell us they saw. I saw a couple reports on Facebook of the homeless urinating in public. We can go over there, ask them to stop, have them move along, they can get a municipal court ticket for that. So there's, there are some things we can do.
If we know about it.
If we know about it. But we need somebody who saw them do it. We still have to have the same rules as like picking them to, through the regular court system. Somebody has to see it, and somebody has to be willing to testify that they saw.
I don't want to skip another legal expert there. Do you have anything to add on any of that?
Not really. I, having been a prosecutor, I'm very familiar with how the police system can be frustrating when people are unfamiliar with how that works. There was one word that you used, Todd, that we clarified, because you said people get out on a PR bond. If people are unfamiliar, that's a personal recognizance bond. And that means that they really have nothing making them return to court except their own conscience. But that's what Todd is criticizing or describing, is that sometimes he's saying he would like people to have to be in jail longer. But the system does not have accommodations for all that, so those PR bonds are very, very common.
And I ask Kitchen Kindness, if you, somebody tells you about a homeless located at a park or wherever, is there a procedure to ask them to move on, or?
Yes, especially if it's after ten PM. Our city parks, nobody can be in there after ten PM, and we'll go ask them to move along.
I just use that as an example, but.
So there are places they can't be at certain times, but Public Sidewalk is not one of those.
You want to do a Coffee with the Cop update, too, Adrian?
Oh, yeah, that went over pretty well. We planned on being in there, figured an hour at most, quite a few people come in and talk, you know, it's almost two and a half to three hours. So we got a lot of good comments, and Adrian was there recording it all, and it was a great day, we really enjoyed it. And I'm glad you kind of brought that up. This is something that the sheriff and I are doing together to show that we are working together, because we need each other. We are both small in numbers, but when we combine our departments, we're pretty decent-sized and can do some more things.
Do you have another one coming up?
Yes, The Barista, and that'll be the twenty-fourth of this month, April, starting at eight AM. And then if everybody likes them, would like us to do it, thinking maybe quarterly or something like that, depending on, you know, the need for it.
Maybe like Coffee with the Cop and City Manager, maybe?
Yeah, there you go. I also, I have a minute. Been hit up by a lot of people the last few weeks about neighborhood watch, so we will be putting a meeting up here again, trying to help people get started in these neighborhood watches. They're the thing that's gonna help us with this crime and things that are going on, because we teach them what to look for, you know, when to call us. When people start knowing that these people in these neighborhoods are watching, they have signs that are looking out there and reporting things, and not afraid to report them and stand up to them, it's gonna help us a bunch. It's a good thing, so.
And it takes everyone to come out to these meetings, too, when they have it. Last time we had it, what, we had two or three people show up?
Yeah, the very last one.
That was it? We're putting these out there, but we need the community to get involved, too. It's more than just social media complaints and saying what's wrong. You guys have to step up and be a part of the solution and to really make a difference around town.
That's correct.
And you walked with the kids to the library, too.
Yeah, that was fun.
They're busy workers.
The PD asked us if we could help block traffic or something, because they were coming up to the library. And I said, well, we'll just bring two of us. The patrol commander and myself went down there, and we walked up with them and walked back.
Those kids were so happy.
They were, and the kid that was up in the lead with us, man, he looks fast. He got the line split up several times, we had to stop while he was trucking on, so. But they enjoyed it, and then today, they brought us a nice note that they made us put their handprints on, and that's great. I think we really liked that.
Well, it was awesome to see. I was glad I got two.
Yeah.
What good stats does Jessica have for us?
We have six thousand calls per service to date and seven hundred and twenty cases.
And that's since January one?
Since January one.
And some of those are code. Izzy? Do you have a question?
Yeah, so the reverse nine-one-one call that happened, can you talk a little bit about that process and how you choose who gets called? And just tell us more about that process.
Sure, I'll tell you a little, but the lady that actually gets them signed up can talk about it. So we call it Code Red. It's the same thing as reverse nine-one-one, too. We have a database of people in there that want to be in there. Like, I went in that night with dispatch, and I said, here, here's a quick message I need out to people. And, you know, and within ten minutes, she hits a button and it goes out to everybody. We did have people complaining that they didn't get it, it's probably because they're not signed up, so.
So how do you sign up for Code Red?
Yeah, that's good. And you can also tell them how many places it's been advertised, so they watch for that.
You can sign up with Code Red. We have a QR code created that's been posted on Facebook, not only for the Fire Department, Lahuna PD, and the City of Lahuna Dispatch, but also Rocky Ford Communication Center has the QR code that's been sent out. You can access it through going to code red dot com. There's also, or there was a link on the Fire Department website that you can sign up, because you have to sign up yourself. I can help walk you through it or obtain your information, and we do it together over the phone. But it's gonna require your name, phone number, address, and your carrier, as to, they know how to alert you, and if there's gonna be costs involved with that, depending on your carrier. But remember, too, dispatch is not only signing up Code Reds, they're answering the nine-one-one phone calls, as well as non-emergent, as well as dispatching police fire and EMS. And just a little tidbit in there, it's dispatch week. And I just wanted to say thanks to my team and all the dispatchers in the area, because we really come together in times of need, especially when at times there's only one or maybe two dispatchers.
And another thing I'd like to add on to the Code Red is, we make the decision as the chiefs and the dispatch of how far that goes out. So, you know, depending on what the incident is and what type of radius, we may not send it out to the entire area. It may be a two-mile radius around there as a quick update, and then as we need to, we can expand that out. So you may have family or friends that live on one side of town that didn't get anything, because we were dealing with something on the east side of town, maybe by chance. So that's how that kind of works as well. Just because a Code Red goes out doesn't mean that everybody gets it every single time. But you got to sign up, and if you have any questions, we can, you can give us, give them a call.
And you got to sign up for more than just weather.
Yes.
You can get, you're gonna get weather and incidents, you're not, if you just sign up for weather, that's all you're gonna get. Those are automated replies. But to sign up for the incident, you have to specifically state that that's what you want to be notified, and whether you want texts or phone calls, it's just gonna depend on the person signing up.
Yeah, it's really important, and it's a very good tool for, to get information.
No, it worked great. My wife got the call at two in the morning, that was amazing.
Two oh one.
Any other questions for?
I think you've got an example of what it actually looks like. There, we'll pay attention the next time we see the QR code, so, thank you for that.
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions for Todd? Thank you, sir. All right. Minutes of the previous meeting.
I make a motion, and I'm gonna accept them into the previous meeting.
Have a motion, go to a second.
Go to a second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, a loss for your vote. That passes unanimously with those that are here. Citizen participation, anybody that wishes to come up for citizen participation, you have a five-minute time limit per person. You may come up at any moment. State your name, your address.
My name is David Polly. I live at six twenty-two Colorado Avenue, and while that, we had some new neighbors move in down the street of ways, and we thought, you know, this, they were very popular. Turned out they were kind of a drug house, and we made the call to the police department, and they started, you know, driving around and looking. And sure enough, they were folks that they knew. Anyway, they talked to me about the need for neighborhood watch and that kind of stuff. So we're gonna have a kickoff for that down here at the, at the Senior Center Thursday. And so we need, you know, collaboration and facilities and things like that, you know, because I think a lot of people don't know about it. They think neighborhood watch is just their neighborhood, and so they don't get the communications all the way through. So we're gonna try to work on that. And, you know, making that call to the police, I wasn't really sure if I was seeing what I was seeing, you know what I mean? And so it was a little bit, you know, I didn't know, so I need some training, too. And I was a truck driver my whole life, and, you know, you get in some dangerous places and things like that, you know, and you kind of recognize problems, you know. But I didn't know exactly what I was doing, if I was, and some of those six thousand calls they had are mine, you know. I'm sure I wore them out, but, you know, they came every day, and hats off to, for doing that. One evening, I heard the gravel in the alley there and a tire, you know, so I looked out, and sure enough, it was a police car. So I waved, and he stopped, and while I was out there talking, you know, there was three vehicles that went up there, and a skateboard guy on an electric skateboard at night, you know, with the backpacks and all that stuff. And so, you know, there was a lot going on, even when I wasn't awake, you know. But anyway, those folks moved on, and I'm sure the police are still investigating. That's, you know, I was hoping that that would have ended, you know, where we ended it, you know, so they're not doing whatever they were doing in any other place, you know. It's kind of a shame to kick it down the, the can down the road, you know, if somebody else's family member gets addicted or overdosed or whatever. But the need for neighborhood watch is important, and we need collaboration. And as I talk to folks, you know, at the Senior Center, you know, everybody's pretty interested. And I talk to neighbors around my house and my area, you know, they're interested, and a lot of people don't know much about that kind of stuff. So I thought about how we could catch on to, you know, the fire that the city had that caused us to vote in the tax that saved the library and the swimming pool and golf course and the Senior Center and that. So Kimberly at the library, you know, she is, she does public addresses and that kind of stuff, so she agreed to be the voice for us, you know. So I think if we can get on the radio a little bit more and get that out, and we can, if we could do a citywide or countywide meeting, you know, like once a month or even once a quarter, I know people would be interested in hear what you guys have to say and what we're gonna do about it, and understand what we can do legally and that kind of stuff, know what we're looking at. You know, things changed quite a bit in my life, you know, and I don't always recognize what's, you know, going on that is there right in front of me. But if we could do that. But if we could do that, I think we have a good chance to get things going. And we have a lot of good things going for us, and that is that, uh, that community involvement, you know. And I think if we can spark on that just a little bit, I think people, you know, they care about their neighbors. And maybe we can expand that a little bit more. We have some other stuff. We're a home rule city. We could make some legislation just in La Jolla here for, like, civil asset forfeiture for, you know, manufacturing or transporting, you know, controlled substances and things like that, where we could fund, uh, you know, a tip line. We don't have Crime Stoppers and things like that, but maybe we could do that with CBI or, and do it through the whole Arkansas Valley, because this is a pretty big area for a lot of different kinds of trafficking. And I'm pretty sure those guys were not just local fellows or, you know. But I don't know everything, and I don't know much about law and that kind of stuff, but I think there's things that we could do. And, uh, I would like to see us really give it a serious try. And I think it depends on everybody, you know, each one of us to, you know, make a stand.
Ms. David?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm ready.
Did you make, did you mention a time?
Do you have a date and a time for this first one?
So this first one is gonna be at the Senior Center at noon. They're gonna have a little lunch over there. And Chief Quick is gonna give us a talk, and we're gonna see, we're gonna, we have some signs already, so we're gonna try to, you know, have a raffle and get some signs in people's hands. I think if we had a lot of signs, you know, that would make a lot of difference. You know, if you come to town and you've got a sign on either end of town, you know, that says Neighborhood Watch is here. They have some nice metal ones that we got. And we're gonna have at the next one, if we do it at the library or over here, that we could give out to the city. It's a metal sign, you know, where people could put it on a pole or whatever. But we also are gonna get a lot of window vinyl signs. And I thought it'd be great if the police department had them in the car, so when they do respond, somebody has been a victim of some sort of crime and they may not know about it. Well, we can start, you know, getting more people that way as well, you know, that, you know, here's a sign and, you know, here's who to contact or whatever we gotta do. But I think if we had a good general, you know, we have a lot of troops. There's a lot of people that are interested in it. I don't know anybody in town that wouldn't be wanting a better town, because our safety is, you know, for the generations to come and all that kind of stuff. And I think, you know, too, we have a great opportunity to, you know, help with diversion and things like that for folks that are addicted and help them get their real life back instead of that troubles like they're having, you know. But again, I think it's gonna take a lot of people, but I think if we do the right things, we can get after the governor and the state, and maybe we can get some grants and, you know, additional funding and things like that. But I really think we need a tip line and a reward system. And I think that can make a lot of difference for a lot of things and a lot of people out here, you know, to change things. So, I, you know, I have ideas, but...
But you did more than that. You brought ideas and you brought a solution, so thank you for starting this. And, you know, hopefully a lot of people attend that first one. And Todd and you will keep us updated, because this is where it's important, when it starts with you bringing it out, instead of from top down.
Yeah. Well, I think if we can get people, like, to get going, it will drive itself, yeah.
What was the date on the first meeting?
It's gonna be this Thursday, the 18th, I believe.
Okay.
Do you have that?
Thank you. You have another question, Dave, right?
Yes. Um, if you don't mind, if you would write down your phone number for me? Sign your neighbor just up the block.
Okay, it's, uh, 719-492-0913.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll give you a text and then with my names, then you have our number too.
Okay, that'd be great, yeah.
We look out for the neighbors as well.
Yeah.
Thank you for all you do.
Yeah, well, thank you guys. Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else for citizen participation?
Good evening, Mayor Ayala, and members of the council. Thank you for allowing me to spend just a few moments with you. My name is Tim Snyder. Some folks down at the Legion Hall call me Radar. I've kind of picked up that name over the years in the capacities that I've worked. And I'm just a little overwhelmed tonight, quite frankly. I'll tell you why I'm here. But just sitting here in this first council meeting I've attended and seeing the complexity of the issues that you face is just kind of mind-boggling, quite frankly. Thank you for having our backs and having, it just gives me a feeling of confidence in having you there and knowing we've got these systems in place and people, people working so earnestly and we have. It's just very humbling, quite frankly. I'm a transplant. My wife and I have moved here just over two years ago to the La Jolla area. We're very happily ensconced here and feel like this is our permanent home. And quite frankly, I'm getting too old to move again anyway, so here we are. Tonight, I'm representing the cause of those who serve our communities in our country and also in the cause of our children and the rising generation. I know that you've been active participants in the past, and I just want to help you to know again this year that we do have the National Wreaths Across America Day that is set for 14 December at 10:00 AM in the Fairview and Calgary Cemetery here in La Jolla. And last year, I was privileged to be a part of that and to see that. And we placed, very respectfully, placed wreaths on 226 gravesites of veterans who are buried in our cemetery. Those wreaths were placed by adult and youth volunteers, and it's really something to watch the youth. To begin with, their legs are a lot younger than ours in the Legion, and so they're able to move a little more quickly. But oh my goodness, they take a wreath and they would place it very carefully on the gravesite. And then each youth would take a step back and almost stand there, just stood a little taller, and repeated aloud the veteran's name, just to honor the memory of. And then went to the next gravesite. It was just something to, it just really inspired me to see that. They were all remembering the sacrifices of veterans and their families in defending the cause of freedom. So I mentioned this year's cemetery, December 14. And we cordially invite your participation if your schedules allow. And if they do, we're excited, we're thrilled, but with all you've got going on, I wouldn't understand why you wouldn't be able to be there. But if you can, it'd be wonderful, Mayor Ayala, or if you're a designee or anybody would come to us. We'd love to have you speak to us for a few moments there to give you some time to say a few words of support to those simply. And there would be a lot of people there. There are over 1,100 veterans there. The best year we've had in the most recent memory has been 226 wreaths that we've been able to raise the money for. We're trying to do a better job. And this year, our goal is to leave no veteran behind. So we're quite frankly talking to everybody we can to encourage them to support this great cause. Each wreath is $17. And I would, I'm here to formally request if the council would consider purchasing on behalf of the city 10 wreaths towards this goal that we've set. I just happen to have a personal letter and an order form attached. If the city, if you, representing the city could authorize this purchase and additionally, because I've, no opportunity missed, if you would consider purchasing even one wreath in your own name. Personally, that would be wonderful if you could do that as well. I will, I'll close with just one little story. We had a grandmother who recently purchased 12 wreaths. And we asked her, "Well, what's the significance of 12 wreaths?" And she said, "Because I have 12 grandchildren. And I desire each of my grandchildren to be present, and I would like them to each have the experience of placing one wreath on a gravesite." That's a tremendous example of somebody looking to the future, to honor the past, look to the future with our rising generation and help them to understand what it takes to move forward and to carry on these great traditions that you are carrying on here. So, thank you very much. Just to let you know, the businesses here, just tremendous outpouring of support. We've not been turned down yet. It's just amazing to go out and meet people and talk to them and then have them call, as I received the call today. Yes, of course, we'd be happy to participate. And here's when you can go pick up the check. It's great, so. Any questions, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, were you gonna mention the Walkathon?
Oh my goodness, yes. The Sherrell School District. Traditionally, they've only done one veterans-type activity a year, and that's been at Veterans Day. They do a great program, et cetera, but their student council got together and said, "You know, we could really use twice a year that we help our, especially our little kiddos, understand what it means." And so they put together what they call a March of Honor Walkathon that is scheduled for May the 2nd, where they are obtaining pledges for laps, $2 a lap, to walk around the track. It's gonna be a great event. We're gonna have music and all this kind of thing out there. And those kids are just going bananas on this. Oh my goodness, so, yeah. It's another example, just outpouring of support. Thank you for mentioning that.
How does the public get a hold of you, Charles, if they wanna purchase a wreath that they're watching right now on Facebook or the audience?
Yes, and would be happy to, on these, I have a zillion order forms with me, by the way. And my phone number, my cell phone, is 719-292-2115. And it should be listed on your, on your letter there that you have there. And on the other forms that I have, I have that as well. They can contact me and I will come running.
Thank you for all you do.
Oh, thank you.
We're gonna pick you up as someone to help campaign and do different things.
Oh, I'll be happy to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brad, what do you think about that? What do you need?
Well, I think that'd be a great cause. I mean, we need to honor them as much as possible. They gave the great sacrifice of trying to protect our country and give us freedom, so.
Can you have a motion? Do you need a consensus? What do you want?
No, I think I...
Go ahead, Eric. Here comes the attorney. What do you think, Eric?
I was gonna chime in with, I have twin kids, I have three kids. My twins are 13, my older son is 15. I don't know what, because I believe there are Wreaths Across America activities in the winter in every area, but their grandma, Darla Youngblood, has been a part of bringing them along to do this, the exact replacement. And it's really been meaningful to them. So I have nothing legal to weigh in, but I know it's been important for them to be a part of it.
And Mr. Mayor, if you would, if you would feel good with it, and I'm good with it, then I can just take care of it on the city side and do the 10 wreaths. And I will also put on there that, on behalf of La Jolla Roll Fire District, we'll match that. And I think we'll go into it together. Does that sound good?
Oh, yes. You're still batting a thousand, Radar. No one's told you no yet.
There you go. You're welcome.
Todd, were you gonna add to that?
He doesn't have a thing of a budget.
All right. Anyone else for citizen participation?
Hello, everybody. My name is Angela Yalla. I live somewhere over there in the 1,500 block of San Juan. Earth Day is on Monday, April 22nd. And in true Angela fashion, I am putting together our very first community cleanup of the season. The brick and tile arroyo of that park, walking trail is used by a ton of people in our community. And instead of joining the complaining, I'm getting to work, so I'm inviting you all to come out. Put any hands, make light work. We have people volunteering drinks. I've spoken to the very able-bodied children at the college who are more than happy to come and help. It is on the 22nd from 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM.
20th?
Sorry, 20th, April 20th. That's a Saturday, from 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM. And the reason we start so early is because it gets hot fast. We have gloves, we have bags, we have water. We just need bodies. It shouldn't take us very long if we all work together. This is probably the first of several, so keep an eye out for it. But if you're available to come down and help out, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela.
Any other citizen participation? Hearing none, we will move on to unfinished business, city manager search. We all should have gotten an update as far as a brochure. Once the brochure is finalized, there's a brochure being put together, that job posting will be live. There's just a couple of touch-up things that we need to hit in on that brochure. That should be sent back this week, so if you guys could make sure you review that brochure and see anything that you wanna add to it. There's also some questions that have been compiled for the community that will be getting sent out via online survey here probably next week. That will be for the community, so we'll make sure we'll put that far and wide as soon as we get that going. And then when it's live and the committee is moving, we will keep you updated on where we're at with it. New business, Mr. Brad Davidson.
Yes. There, I did finally type on this, but we were informed that the old electric truck that we replaced with the new one through the electric department that Mr. Jackson was working on not too long ago, we did receive that. The city of, or the Los Angeles Power would like to buy our older truck to help their fleet. And instead of $56,000, that should be $53,000 is what they've offered to pay. My understanding is, the information I was given was that's, you know, a pretty good price for that age of truck that we're selling them, and we wouldn't be able to get that anywhere else. So I think that's a great move to go ahead and sell this piece of equipment to them to help our neighbors out, because it's shown that we've been down there to help them. There may be times they may have to help us, and we know that they got a good piece of equipment. So I would like to recommend action from the council to go ahead and approve this sale for $53,000 to Los Angeles.
I'll ask for a motion.
I make a motion that we sell the electric department bucket truck, which was replaced recently, to Los Angeles Power for a total of $53,000.
Do you have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I just wanted to know, what year is it?
Good question.
Sorry, I work for a cardio.
I know, I got you, I got you. I'll get back with you.
It's okay.
Yeah, it's still in service and it just was time to replace that one.
Okay.
Sorry, I don't have that answer.
That's okay.
Okay.
And we were pretty confident that that's, I was gonna say, that that could be fair market value?
Yes, that's very, that's very fair. Mr. Jackson reached out to some different places and stuff, and that was, that was very fair. He did his research on it.
Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously for everyone here. All right. Cynthia, do you wanna come up for this next agenda item? It says me, but I've...
We also have folks in the church here.
Okay, awesome. Everyone can come up.
Good evening. Hi. Would you like me to just give a basic summary? Okay. These fine ladies wrote a local landmark nomination for the United, let me get this correct, United Methodist Church of La Jolla, an educational building. This building is 111 years old, and it is in very good shape. They've taken wonderful care of it. And what they did, they filled out the application, but they also attached, and I hope you guys got this information too. that if you're listed on the state or the national register, you can automatically be locally landmarked, but you also need to get your vote. And you also have to go through the certified local government commission. We voted on it during our last meeting, and this is the most wonderful application I think I've ever seen, thoroughly researched, with everyone on the board voted unanimously to pass it. It is the second landmark nomination that we've had since 2018, when we first became a certified local government. The other one's the hanger. You know what I'm talking about. It's out at the airport, and this is the second one, and this one deserves it. And ladies, do you wanna tell them why you did it? Because this was a lot of work.
I think one of the, on behalf of the congregation of the Methodist Church, one of the largest obligations, burdens that we have is that beautiful building. And one of the ways we're seeking to help care for it is this designation, which will open us up for grants so that we can do the maintenance that that building deserves and do the maintenance and maintain that beautiful building as opposed to it deteriorating and losing that in that, that important neighborhood that it sits in. So, this committee, Betty and Donna and I have been working on this as a committee since October, writing it and researching it, and we're just thrilled to be here. Thank you.
What year was that underfill?
The ground was broken 1911. Okay. And then built thereafter.
Seems like just yesterday.
One other thing that they're eligible for is tax credits. So, you can usually get 35% of whatever the eligible costs are returned to you in tax credits, and then you can sell them for anywhere for, usually from 80 to 90 cents on the dollar. It was, I was just in a meeting in Oregon today and somebody in Eds got 98 cents on the dollar when they sold their tax credits. So, it's, it's a way for them to be able to take care of their building. Yeah, and, and as I said, it's beautifully researched and wonderfully written, and which I'm proud of it. I'm glad that, that we were able to see this.
And briefly, Cynthia, can you tell people if they're interested in doing the same, who would they contact?
Me. If you contact me, I'll try and find some information for you and/or, I mean, I came to the church and met with the folks and sat down, broke bread with them, and we discussed all the different steps, and I had, what was it, three or four pages of what you could do? So, you know, what the next steps were, and they also worked with the state to go to the state register and get them listed as well, so, yeah.
And so, once they go through you, then it goes to CLG and then here, is that correct?
No, CLG's already passed. We're waiting for you.
No, no, for someone new.
For someone new?
Yes.
You come to me, I'll help you, then it goes to CLG. Hopefully, I will also connect you with people at the state who, they were very nice to you, weren't they?
They were great.
They were great. That, that can help you get it listed on the state register and potentially, you don't wanna stop at the state register. If you fill out a nomination form, you can, you can get listed in the national register. And just, just so, yeah, usually it's somebody who sits in that seat right there who asks me, how does that limit the folks if they do get listed on the register? It doesn't limit you at all. I mean, you can, you can paint it pink and put feathers on it if you want to. You may get delisted, but there, there are no disadvantages for you. So, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
All right, I entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to recommend the approval of the local landmark application for the United Methodist Church.
Have a motion and a second?
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second? Any other discussion? If not, I'll ask for your vote. And that passes unanimously for everyone here. All right, committee and board reports. Any committee and board reports? I do have a utility board work session that I will report on. Paul is not here tonight, so I don't, I don't take as detailed notes as he does, but the utility board did have a work session, and the main topic of that work session was the Arkansas Valley Conduit. We made great strides during that work session. We got a lot of new information. We looked not just at conduit, but at selenium and PFOS and a whole bunch of different water issues that are coming down the pipeline. And, you know, we're, we're just preparing ourselves to best deal with this as a united front, not just with the city of La Junta, but with the surrounding cities and water companies as this gets closer and closer to completion. We have a lot of work to do on that, but we are headed in the right direction, and as soon as we have more answers, we will share them with you and the council, who also post, pass that on in some fashion with that motion to, to the utility board, but we'll be working towards getting us all up to date on that. All right. And then, it's not really a committee or board. Do you wanna talk about the hospital dinner, Brad?
Sure. Last Wednesday, we had a hospital meeting, or hospital board dinner, not a meeting. We do this yearly. This was my first one to attend. It was great to, to be there. We, we had a great dinner, and then we just kinda got an overall update of where our hospitals sitting at, what's going on, their challenges right now between Medicare, Medicaid, being able to submit claims, but also the positive side of what they're trying to bring back to our hospital of getting more specialty clinics up and running, more, more doctors, some newer doctors, and some new programs that they're trying to get into place, just to kinda help boost things and try to get it out there that Arkansas Valley Regional Medical Center's here, and that's, it's a good thing, and we should be able to, to be able to stop there instead, instead of having to go out of town. So, we had a very positive environment, very good, good communication, and then we, as the city, was able to talk, give our updates of what's going on and kinda got on the same page as everything.
I'd just like to add that I think Andy Plummer's a huge asset to this community. I thought his, the leadership he's showing in rural hospitals in general in eastern Colorado is impressive, and him being able to bring Senator Hickenlooper to La Junta to discuss the details, it, it's very complicated. It's not a 30-second speech of, so, how are things at the hospital? So, just a shout-out to Andy Plummer as the CEO of the hospital. It was very impressive at the, the meeting and gave us good information, good, good information to chew on.
Okay. Interim city manager report.
I just got a few things from some of the departments, what's going on around, around the city, help, help keep you guys updated. You know, the last meeting that we had, we had some information about the senior center and the dances, that they were trying to kinda get up and going again. So, they've had two dances. They've had around 20, 20 people attend at the day dance and about 35 attend the evening dance. So, that's kind of a good plus to kinda get going on. So, first steps to getting it all back up and going, but that's that. They had a work session lately and it was very productive. And then I think everybody's seen C-Trans starting up today. Now, that's the old big chemi-trans transit. They've kinda reworked it a little bit, and it's the valley's first regional transportation system now. And they start in Los Anamos and they come to La Junta, and what they do is they drop everybody off at the senior center, and then if they need the city transit for La Junta to go places, they're already right there. Then they'll move on to Rocky Ford, and they also go down to Lamar. So, they've kinda expanded their, since their, their process there. The parks department, you know, they're planting some trees down in Brick and Tile. They got some boulders placed down around the parking lot a little bit to kinda help prevent people parking all the way down by the bridge, so that's a plus. Continuing projects there, again, still working on getting some waterline advancement to get some grass going and things like that. And then the slide replacement over at College Overlook Playground, so that's in the process as well. So, Brock and his guys are working hard there. Recreation, like everybody knows, that the baseball registration is ongoing, and it's at the new lower, or the back to the lower rate of what they promised, so that's been a plus. Soccer started, and they're starting to get, working on the pool. It's about that time to get it up and running. And the pool will be back up to 100% open this year, bearing the weather and everything, but that's the goal this year is to get that up and running. Cemetery, it kinda ties into the wreath stuff, but they're gonna get ready, they're getting ready to work for the Memorial Day cleanup and old, cleaning up the old and the damaged decorations for Memorial Day. So, everybody will see them out kinda touching up the headstones, and if they're damaged or old, they'll help kinda get those cleaned up as well. So, our guys out there are working really hard. Report from the electrical department from the big windstorm a few weeks ago. They did have a broken pole right there on 10th Street, right by the new bathrooms for the park. They did get it stabilized and they get that, they did get it replaced out with no problem, no, no issues there. And then they've been working over in North La Junta at our well field, at one of the well fields, replacing and setting some new poles and maintaining a lot of lines. So, they've been working hard over there. The water department received a new VAC truck. You guys have probably known in the past, they've had to ask Rocky Ford to borrow theirs on large water breaks and certain breaks around town. Well, Tom and his crew's been working hard to get, it's a new refurbished truck and system. So, the system on the back's new, but the chassis is a 2007, but it's gonna be like, there we go, I got that for you. I had, I haven't even written down right here at least. So, it's almost identical to the style of truck that Rocky Ford has. So, what it does is gives us two in the valley, but one is ours. He did get them talked down to 85,000 instead of 125,000. So, and then this week, he's hoping that the company comes out and does a training for all the guys onto how to properly maintain the truck, use the truck, and with this piece of equipment, this is just another resource, not only for water, sewer breaks and things like that, but if, by chance, if we ever have a trench collapse with people in it doing work, this is a vital piece of equipment that first responders can use to help remove the dirt so we can access to the patients quicker. So, we're not gonna have to wait for a truck to come out of town, from out of town, we've got one local. So, it's, it's kind of all the way around the resource, not just the water department resource. So, that's a big pickup there. The streets department, they are getting ready to work in front of Van Hooks to replace that storm sewer line. They're gonna start working on 14th Street, just south of, over there, Brad, on Bradish and Grace, refixing, fixing up the four-to-inch, six-inch gaps that have been kind of an issue. So, that's gonna be on the, on the radar real soon. Radar, did you get that? Okay. That just kinda came out. I didn't practice that. And then, the big project that's gonna be happening too, you know, we had the bridge inspections come across. Third Street, the Third and Adams Bridge right there over the Arroyo. We're gonna save a bunch of money by having our guys be able to do a lot of the work. So, right around May 20th, they're gonna plan on doing a deck replacement and a bunch of maintenance to that bridge. So, you may see some detours around that area. It's gonna take a little while, but our maintenance crew, or our street crew's gonna be able to do a lot of it with conjunction of probably some help from TLM on a couple pieces of specialized equipment, but we'll be able to get that back up and get another, hopefully 20 to 30 years out of that bridge before that one has to be replaced. So, that's gonna be a big project, but also helping our city out too. A couple other little things. I'm sure everybody saw on Facebook that Pueblo had a huge fire up at Everest, a big property fire, and then they also had a big water line fire going on at the same time. Well, they actually reached all the way out to La Junta and other surrounding departments around southeast Colorado, and we were able to go up and assist up there on both fires and still provide adequate protection for our area, so that was a big plus. Little plug for this, on April 26th through the 28th, we are hosting the Fire on the Plains Training, which is all kinds of training from incident command to hands-on live fire training, auto extrication, specialized training. And as of last Friday, we have about 110 to 115 people signed up from around the state. So, they're gonna spend the weekend here in La Junta doing that. So, really, really kudos to that. Hey, thank you. It's a good thing.
Maybe we could send the city manager over there.
Yeah, the city manager will make an appearance over there every now and then. The last thing I wanted to bring up too is during the incident where the La Junta Police Department was out looking for the gentleman that escaped from the hospital, Chief Quick and I got together over in the Arroyo over at Second and Warren, or right there by Second and Anderson, and he did a search, we did, they did a search over there to make sure he wasn't hiding, but we noticed, he came across the tents and a bunch of other things in there. He called me to come over there, we looked, I made the decision. He already, I gave him the okay. He made a phone call to our street department. They cleaned that end of the Arroyo up. So, the big tents gone, the other items left out and around of, we'll just leave it as other items right now, that's been all cleaned up. So, my hat's off and a huge thank you to the street department for going out and taking care of that for us. So, that's two places that we've kinda gotten cleaned up. Hopefully, we can kinda keep that going. And the shopping carts got picked up by the museum, so that's a, that's a big plus too. So, other than that, hey, six weeks in and we're still going strong. So, here we are.
I have a question.
Oh, yeah.
The hanging of...
Oh, yes, thank you for bringing that up. I was notified by that the vultures are back in the area around Sixth and Bellevue, Sixth and San Juan, that area where it was kind of a problem in the past. The FDA and Mr. Gasnik are gonna be working on a project. They will be hanging a deterrent sculpture up in the trees, and it is gonna be a, in the form of a vulture, but it's not a real bird. So, I wanna make sure to stress that it is a decoy only. There will also be signs out and stuff like that, because the birds that have come back have already made a big mess on the sidewalks, and it's, it's not, it's not good, but this is their process, so I would say in the next few days that, that will be coming up, and you may see it, see it up in the, in the tree, but it's not a real bird. It is just a true, it's made out of metal and some, and some canvas and things like that. So, please just help support us on that and don't dink us on that, so. Okay? That's what I've got.
Thanks for the heads up on the front end.
I just had a question on the senior center.
Yes.
Are they renting out the senior center?
No, it's just a stop. It's just a stop there on the outside, instead of stopping...
No, I mean, are they gonna be renting it for...
I'm not sure what they, coming up with the, the work session that they had. I haven't heard what the final answer was of what they decided to do.
Okay.
Have to wait until Paul gets back.
Yeah, Paul, yeah, Paul was down there for that.
Okay.
That's all I got.
Any other questions for Brad?
Yeah, I, I got one.
Sure.
You mentioned the Arroyo area, and you know, obviously with the warmer weather coming up with the Brick and Tile Park, it's gonna be even more populated. There's tunnel systems out there off the Arroyo. Is there anything being done? Maybe we can close those off or, and maybe you can talk in the white helmet aspect of why it's not a good idea to go in there.
Sure, you know, that's a good point. That was kinda come across my desk just the other day, and I haven't got to look at it too much, but we do probably need to look at trying to secure it off a little bit, and I'll have to work with our street department and, and things like that. We can't totally close them off because it is an active storm sewer, but we do not want people going into those. One, the oxygen level's really low, and there are possible sewer gases every now and then, so if you do go in there, you could get hurt and become unconscious and have an issue. So, we are encouraging people not to mess with that, but we will, I will give an update hopefully at the next meeting to where we have some type of plan in place to start getting that taken care of, and that is, that's a very good thing that you brought up.
And I bring that up because there were some kids in there.
Some kids, okay. Well, and we can, I'll talk with Mr. Quick, with Chief Quick, and you know, hopefully if we do see that, again, we encourage people, if you see them, they can call and we can go from there, but we will, I'll definitely make sure that gets worked on.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, governing body comments.
I have a question. We had talked about having a town hall. First, it was going to be on public safety, and then we talked about rounding it to other discussion items. Just wondering if that has been scheduled yet?
It has not been scheduled. They are doing coffee with the cop for public safety. I wanted to do it towards the end of this month, but a lot of other stuff has, has arisen, but we do need to skip some dates together with, I'll do it now and we'll see what we can help with, probably for May, first part of May, early second part of May.
All right. I mean, May always turns into mayhem with end of school and graduations aplenty, and I, I, I have a long list. I think other people have long lists. I think there's a lot of people that are wondering how to have conversations and questions about some of the things going on in town, and I feel like we promised this as an outlet, so I, please let me know what I can do to get that scheduled and make it successful.
You know, something else that, that used to be done a long time ago, where individual council members could have ward meetings, and they could schedule those either in their ward or in a neutral, a neutral place to do that, and you wouldn't need the whole council there, but you could, you could team up with your fellow ward representative, or, you know, if you wanted me there, I could... know, if you wanted to be there, I could try to attend to, but you always have that opportunity to, to do something like, not just you, but anyone that wanted to get something going a little bit sooner than, you know, when we're all up here, it's hard to get schedules synced together to all the year, but that's also an option for you in the future too.
All right. Do now.
Any other governing body comments?
Yeah, so speaking of ward meetings, me and myself, I plan, starting in May, on Thursday evenings about six o'clock, I will start walking with my dog the entire ward. So the first week, it's going to be all of Smithland, which I know Smithland doesn't cover the ward too, but I'm going to walk all the way to First Street and all the way back. So, just so you know, there's, I'll be out there, so if you want to join me, have any issues you want to talk about, don't want to come to the city council, you know, that's my goal, is to work my entire ward each week by walking, getting a little, little healthier there. Also, I, I want to touch on the neighborhood watch that was brought up. I think that's a great idea. I wish we get a lot of participation in it, because proactive citizens help make proactive police officers. And sometimes even if there may be nothing that they can do, sometimes officer presence will be enough to deter any of the bad things that may or may not be going on. And lastly, plug out to Adrian, and Todd, and Brad, and all our local public safety for their quickness in getting information out to your Southeast Colorado News on SecoNews.org.
Thank you.
I've got that one there for you, Adrian.
Thank you.
But anymore, if I hear anything, and it's, you know, is it rumored? First place I go is Seco News. And most of the time, there's something from the police or fire department on there already. So it's been a huge thing, especially on incidents that we had with the Walmart thing, as well as the escaped inmate. Right from the source, they were there and collaborated with Adrian on that. So I appreciate the fire chief, AKA city manager, as well as our police chief for, like I said, their collaboration with Seco News.
Thank you, guys. Thank you. Any other governing body comments?
Really quick, just a couple things coming up at Otero College. Before we meet again, Otero will actually graduate about three hundred and fifty people with degrees, certificates, and credentials. It's a big, big deal for our community when you think about that number. So, that's coming up on May fourth, and it's an all-day thing this year. The community concert series continues on Saturday the twentieth, pre-concert seven to nine in the evening. Don't forget to check those out. That's all I got.
Awesome. And then the only thing I have, I did the CDS, I did the utility board, you covered the hospital. Senator Hickenlooper was here. He met with our hospital, and then all of the southeast hospitals, in addition to myself representing La Jolla. Commissioner Rob Okus was also at the meeting with us, so we got to speak to him about the hospital, supporting Andy, but then he also wanted to talk about water a little bit. He was headed to Herecotta Farms after the hospital meeting to meet with them. So thank you to Senator for coming out and listening to us, and, and being there for us to try and help us with our complex issues here in, in southeast Colorado. Also, big shout out to his aide, Antonio Huerta, who is the southeast, he's actually from Grenada, but he serves as Hickenlooper's aide for southeast Colorado, and he kept in contact as well as Andy, and making sure that we were able to get time with the senator, and sometimes I still call him governor, but it's always great when they come down firsthand to see what's going on, instead of just, you know, sending their aides and people like that. So we thank him for coming down. Myself and city manager Davidson got to take a tour of the brewery. It was a non-tasting tour that we took, so if anyone's seen us out there. It was a, a great tour, a beautiful facility. Everything that they're doing is, is really good. It seems like they're growing pretty fast and continue to, to want to expand into the future.
That's what it sounds like.
We, we enjoyed our time out there. We learned a lot. You want to add anything on that, Brad?
No, it's, it's been a great asset to town, and their plans, you know, I think they have a bright, bright future ahead of them, and we just want to see them expand and keep growing big.
So I want to say thank you to Tiffany, and I guess Dean is still a part of the, the deal too, so thank you to Tiffany and Dean for extending that invitation and allowing me to bring a friend with me there to, to go. And so it was a great way to get out in the community and just show them that we support them, and we look forward to what they're doing in the future. They did say they want to do a tap room soon. It probably wouldn't be onsite, but they're, they're looking for other areas to do that. So, as soon as we know more, they let us know, we'll, we'll let everyone.
That's exciting.
Well, I guess they'll have to come for the liquor license, right? So we'll all know at the same time. And then with that, just the hospital dinner is, is, just to go over a little bit again, that was, that was a great meeting, great dinner. I, I feel like we're all on the, the same page. You know, we get to collaborate where we can. We didn't want to do it with them having someone escape from the hospital, but other than that, we want to, we want to, you know, work with them in, in other ways, and Andy's doing a great job. So, keep that relationship strong, and, you know, we're in a, a new era of La Jolla, and it's going to be a really good one, so, so we're all looking forward to it. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for coming on tonight.
For your La Jolla City Council, with your Southeast Florida News, I'm Adrian Hart.